Welcome to the August 8th meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Please take the roll call.
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Carrs.
Here.
Mr. Ron. Mr. Patrick. Mr. Dunham.
Here.
Ms. Vlad.
Here.
Ms. Hyker.
Here.
Mr. Hart. Ms. Dole.
Here.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you. Piers, going down the roll here, we do not have any minutes to consider from the last Special Order of Business Executive Session under, and we have disclosures under that. Are there any board members that have disclosures they'd like to make? Ms. Dole?
I will abstain from the consent from item, from the Consent Agenda Resolution 2013-009, or 039, I'm not sure which one it is, but because of a conflict, I was not present at that discussion at last month's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Ms. Vlad?
Yes, I wasn't present at the last meeting either, but I have listened to the audio, so I'm prepared to address the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other disclosures? I have one to make. I was also not at last, the last meeting, and I did listen to the audio for the last meeting, and I am also prepared to vote on the resolution for approval before us under the consent agenda tonight. Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we're moving down to the consent agenda. We have one resolution up for approval tonight. That's Resolution 2013-009. It's related to case 2013-039. It's a resolution concerning the variance request for reducing the minimum lot size of a 6,000-square-foot lot down to 2,500 square feet for the B2A district. Legal description for the property is Anchorage, original townsite, Block 49, Track A, Fragment Lot 3, generally located north of West Sixth Avenue and between C and E Streets. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed? Mr. Carrs? Mr. Vig has moved. Mr. Carrs has seconded. Mr. Vig, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. Mr. Carrs? Seeing none, please vote on the consent agenda. We have five votes for the resolution, and the resolution passes, consent agenda passes. Moving down to appearance requests, we have no appearance requests before us tonight. We also have no unfinished business and actions of public hearings, which moves us down to the regular agenda. And under public hearings of the regular agenda, we have cases. It's under public hearings, not the regular agenda, as I read earlier. So it's age of the public hearings. We have one case tonight to hear, and it's case 2013-111. Petitioners Randall and Denise Farley, co-trustees. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Mr. Dunham, members of the board, my name is Bill Choquet. I've agreed to appear for Randy and Dr. Farley, who are out of state at this time.
Okay, you have a letter of representation.
There should be a letter in the file.
Okay, thank you. I'll finish reading here. The order of business here tonight on this variance request is, I'll read the variance request into the record. The board will rule on the sufficiency of notice for the hearing. Then we'll hear a presentation from the staff, which should not exceed 10 minutes. At the conclusion of the staff presentation, board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. Then we move down to the applicant giving their testimony, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall begin, the hearing shall begin to be open for the public testimony, with each person having three minutes to provide testimony, and representative of groups have five minutes. Each person who testifies may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. At the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board will then proceed to make oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance request. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later date. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair will ask for a positive motion from the board. I want to read something about, okay, all right. Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the variance request into the record. I will allow staff to present sufficiency of notice. The variance request is from AMC 2145-110 to allow a six-foot-high fence to be erected in the R3 multiple-family residential district. The legal description of the property is Captain Cook Estates, Lot 1A-1, generally located north of Captain Cook Estates Circle and south of West Northern Lights Boulevard. The site address is 2901 Captain Cook Estates Circle. Staff, please present sufficiency of notice.
Mr. Chair, 95 public hearing notices were mailed. Four were returned unclaimed. Two were returned in support of the variance request. One was received today that opposed the variance request.
Okay. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice from the board? Seeing none, please present your case.
As mentioned, this is a variance request to allow a six-foot-high fence in secondary front yard setbacks for Lot 1A Block 1, Lot 1A1, Captain Cook Estates subdivision. The petition site is zoned R3, and it's developed with a single-family residential use. Captain Cook Estates is subject to two zoning districts, R3 and R2M, but the entire subdivision is developed with single, as a single-family residential subdivision. As a corner lot, this has three frontages. West Northern Lights Boulevard butts the north petition site boundary, and Captain Cook Estates Circle adjoins the west and the south petition site boundary. When there are three frontages, land use review does determine which is the primary front yard setback. And they have determined that the prevailing yard pattern is along the south petition site boundary, so the 20-foot front yard setback would be along the south petition site boundary, with 10-foot secondary front yard setbacks required along the west and the north property boundaries. In this instance, the owner wishes to install a six-foot-high fence along the north 45 feet of the west property boundary, along the 55-foot length of the north property boundary, and along 10 feet of the secondary front yard setback along the east property boundary. The proposed fence is a steel see-through fence with a flush rail top above all the pickets, so as not to harm any wildlife that may try to jump the fence. But plating characteristics associated with the petition site make it unique lot within the subdivision. It is the only lot that has three frontages. West Northern Lights Boulevard right-of-way adjoins the north property boundary of Lot 1A1, which is the petition site, as well as the three lots to the east of the petition site. At this location, the West Northern Lights Boulevard right-of-way is very deep, because in 1985, a plat was recorded that dedicated 1.17 acres to West Northern Lights Boulevard. So the right-of-way of West Northern Lights Boulevard ranges from 242 feet at the widest point adjoining Lot 1A1, and it narrows down to 180 feet adjoining Lot 4, the furthest east lot from the current petition site. Note 2 on the original Woodland Park subdivision plat does note that portions of this subdivision are situated in the flood hazard district. It should be noted that, I have to find the name of the subdivision, that the municipality also acquired a large tract of land north of West Northern Lights Boulevard in the subdivision that adjoins the north boundary of West Northern Lights Boulevard, and that is, that was also for drainage and purposes, and flood hazard purposes, because Fish Creek does run through that subdivision, as well as the Fish Creek Green Belt encircles the west, east, and the southern boundary of Captain Cook Estates subdivision. So it is assumed that the right-of-way take that was done in 1985 was for drainage purposes and flood hazard risk. There is an estimated 145 feet of undeveloped right-of-way for adjoining the north boundary of the petition lot, and the undeveloped right-of-way is landscaped, it's owned, and it's maintained by the municipality. This undeveloped right-of-way also affects the three lots to the east of the petition site, however, those are through lots. And under AMC 2145-110, through lots are allowed to construct a fence up to eight feet in height on their secondary front yard setback, which is along West Northern Lights Boulevard, because their primary front yard setback would be along Captain Cook Estates Circle, from which they take their primary access. So this lot, the petition lot, is unique in the subdivision in having three frontages, which does not allow for a backyard to have a fence height that will provide for safety from wildlife, as well as security from theft or vandalism of backyard fixtures that is permitted to other lots in the subdivision. These plating special conditions are not self-imposed. They are just what has existed, been created over time through a series of plats. Granting a variance to allow a six-foot-high fence to be constructed in only a portion of the secondary front yard setbacks will not adversely affect adjacent property. It is not an opaque fence. It will not change the character of the neighborhood, nor will it allow a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zoning district in which the property is located. It will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Allowing a six-foot-high fence will provide security to enable the homeowners the use of their backyard that is enjoyed by other property owners in the subdivision. And because it is a see-through fence, it would not impact any clear vision area that would impede the safe passage of traffic. And it is the minimum required to allow the applicant to fence a backyard that establishes boundaries and sets it apart from the public right-of-way. The department does recommend approval of the variance request, subject to recommended conditions on page 7. The two conditions, one is just outlining if the variance is granted, what the variance is for, and the other is to record a notice of zoning action. And the letter of authorization is reproduced on page 24 of the packet for Mr. William L. Choquet to represent the Randall E. Farley Trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Are there any questions from the board, from our staff? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Ms. O'Brien, under standard number seven in your analysis, is the first sentence of your response a typographical situation where it says substantially/ partially/ not met? Is that what happened there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vig, yes, that is typical. I set up a form for a variance, and I just didn't change that to appears to be substantially met.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Ms. Dole?
That was going to be my first question as well. But I have another question. I was, I just want to make sure I understand the variance, how you are looking at the variance request. I understand that it's requesting six feet instead of four feet, because four feet would be allowed. And then my other, and then the other thing I want to make sure I understand is that there's three different, you know, the north, the west, and the, but three different lines where the fence would be placed. So is it a request, would a four-foot fence be allowed on all three of those places where now a six-foot fence is being proposed?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Dole, a four-foot fence is allowed in primary and secondary front yard setbacks. So the variance request is to requesting, to be able to place a six-foot fence along the north 45 feet of the west secondary front yard setback, a six-foot fence along the north northern secondary front yard setback, because that is adjoining Northern Lights Boulevard right-of-way, and then 10 feet back along the east property boundary, because front yard setbacks are measured from one lot line to the other. Typically, they're measured from side yard to side yard, and then the, as a straight line, and then the side yard setback is measured back of the front yard setback. So that is what they're requesting, is to be able to put a six-foot-high fence along that portion of their secondary front yard setbacks.
Are they asking for any additional, to go into any, into the setback area?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Dole, no, they want to put the fence on their property line, not with, in the setback area, but in the, on their property boundary.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board, from our staff? Seeing none, does the petitioner representative have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what's basically occurring here is that they don't believe a four-foot fenced backyard will provide security for the moose and for protection of their assets.
Mr. Choquet, I, what I wanted to find out is if you had any questions for staff. If you don't, and you're ready to testify, we can start.
Okay, I have no questions.
Okay. Could you state your name and spell your last name for the record?
My name is William Choquet. Choquet is spelled C-H-O-Q-U-E-T-T-E. I'm here as a representative of the petitioner, and I agree with everything staff said. What's occurring is that this lot is very unique and ended up with three front yards, and because of that, it's limited to a four-foot fence, and a four-foot fence generally will not provide protection against moose and intruders. It doesn't adversely affect any adjoining property or right-of-way. It's the only lot that faces this problem in that subdivision, and if it draws the fence back in without getting the variance, it loses 1,000 square feet of what's only 7,500 square feet to start with, including the house, front yard, and both side yards. Across Northern Lights Boulevard, I believe, is a gathering place, if not a camp for homeless, and there's a lot of reason to want the security that this fence offers. If you look on page 26, 27, and 28, you can see that what the Farleys are willing to do is put in a high-end steel fence that'll have aesthetically pleasing look, and is what's used for parks and high-end developments. They're really only asking for an extra two feet of their fence, so that they can effectively protect a backyard and have their tables and chairs and stuff back there. And we haven't been able to come up with any adverse effect to anyone. It's 145 feet of landscaped property to Northern Lights, and it's kind of up on a hill even through Captain Cook Estates Road, so it really shouldn't have any adverse effect, and it's not something that was caused by the petitioner, they'd just like to get it fixed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Choquet. Is there any, are there any questions for the petitioner's representative? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Vig, I'm sorry, Mr. Choquet, Mr. Vig.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I buzzed in at the last minute there. Mr. Choquet, the intent of the fence, the variance request is to provide a six-foot fence, which will enable it to be secured in the backyard?
Yes.
That's right?
That's correct.
And so, looking at page 15 of the packet, which depicts some heavier lines that represent where the fence would go, is that what that indicates there?
Yes, it is. So the fence will come forward on the, on the west side, but only to about the back of the house.
And will it then, from that point?
To the house, to the gate.
Continue in the easterly direction to the house and tie into the house?
Correct.
Similarly, on the east side of the property?
And similarly on the east.
And see the west, tie into the corner?
You'll have another gate over there, but there won't be any gate in the north, except on the two sides of the house.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vig, and Mr. Choquet, thank you. Seeing no other comments from the, or questions from the board, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone interested in speaking to the case may do so. Seeing that there are no other individuals in the audience other than the petitioner, I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And staff, do you have any rebuttal testimony that you want to offer?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And Mr. Choquet, do you have any?
I have no more.
Okay, the petitioners indicated they have no additional information they want to pass on. So with that, I will entertain a motion, a positive motion from the board to consider this request. Oh, and public hearing is now closed, so with that, I will consider a motion from the board to, for the variance request. Mr. Carrs moved as the, over on this, and Ms. Vlad is the second here. Mr. Carrs, could you speak to the seven conditions?
Yes, my motion, I move that with respect to case 2013-111, we grant a variance from AMC 2145-110 to allow a six-foot fence in secondary front yard setbacks, subject to Department Recommendation Number 1 and 2 on page 7 of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Carrs. Ms. Vlad, you second?
I do, and I actually don't have anything to add. I agree with staff's analysis.
Okay.
And intend to support the motion.
Okay. Mr. Carrs, could you speak to the seven conditions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also intend to support the motion, concurring with the findings of staff with respect to the seven standards, specifically Standard 1, concurring with staff that plating characteristics associated with the petition site make it unique. The right-of-way for West Northern Lights Boulevard, as well as Captain Cook Estates, well in excess of what is typically dedicated for municipal streets, is an exceptional circumstance, and the fact that the adjacent lots are permitted to construct fences that exceed the four, the six-foot height fence, which are the lots immediately adjacent to this lot, but the same relief is not available to the petition site. Topography is also a significant issue for me. Towards Northern Lights, there's a fairly significant topographic difference as well. Standard 2, I concur that the standard appears to be substantially met, in that the lot has three frontages, which does not allow for a backyard. Standard 3 appears to be substantially met. The right-of-way take joining the south side of West Northern Lights being a specific circumstance. Standard 4, the variance will not affect the, adversely affect the use of adjacent property. This variance, if granted, will have no impact on the use of adjacent property. I concur that staff finding, number 5 is substantially met. The granting of the variance will not allow a use that is not otherwise permitted in the R3 zoning district. Standard 6, granting this variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding neighborhood. And Standard 7, concur that this is the variance, is the minimum required to allow the applicant to fence a backyard, which would be a typical fence height of six feet. For those reasons... For those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Vlade, I understand that you agree with his reasoning. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, is there any? Ms. Dole?
I, I just wish to note on the record that the, that summary was probably written before this last comment was received, which indicates that there was, there's at least one person who does not, who feels that there would be an adverse effect. And that would go to item six.
Okay, Ms. Dole, are you indicating that you do not believe that the seven standards are met?
I think, I'm not saying that. I think it would be hard to reach that conclusion from one comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any, any other comments from board members? Seeing none, let's vote on the resolution or on the motion. The variance request has passed. It got seven votes, or six votes in favor, so your variance has passed. In closing, I need to remind you that the decision of the board is a final decision with respect to the issues involved in the case, and that any party involved has 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with Superior Court. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move out of our public hearing session and go down to reports. Do we have any reports from board members? Seeing none, board comments. Ms. Vlade?
I apologize for missing last time. It sounded very interesting.
Yeah. All 110 minutes of it, so. Ms. Iker, any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Vig?
No, I don't have anything.
Ms. Dole?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Cars?
No.
I have no comments as well, other than I am also sorry I missed the meeting last week. I would have rather been here, I can guarantee that, so. But as far as scheduling for the next meeting of the zoning board, do you know when the next zoning board meeting is?
I believe it's September 12th.
September 12th? Because we kind of ran short tonight, is there anybody not going to be there next month? I'm just looking at my calendar right now. Okay. Looks like I'm going to be here as well, so. I have nothing else on, on the agenda, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is in response to the meeting from last month regarding the application for a variance to construct a fourplex on the lot that did not have the sufficient acreage to have a fourplex in the R2M. And the question raised by members of the zoning board was, they were unsure because this variance had been heard in 2011, and at the time, the board denied the request. And the request came back to the board, and the board chose not to open the public hearing because the question raised was, do they have standing to rehear this, having once denied the request? And should they come back, should, having once denied the request, wasn't that the final answer? And the procedure would be to proceed on to Superior Court under an appeal process. And basically, we did receive information from the law department, basically that stated, unless there is a change of circumstances regarding the request, that means that the request was for the same lot, the lot size did not change, the number of units being requested did not change, nothing changed about the variance request that was originally denied. So if there were no changes in the circumstances regarding the original variance request, that the doctrine of res judicata would apply, meaning that they should not be allowed to come back and ask for the very same thing, having once been denied for the very same thing. There were no changes to the variance request that they were asking for that had been denied in late 2011. So that was the response that we heard back today from the law department, that the doctrine of res judicata, yeah, judicata, res judicata, would prohibit them from coming back to the, to the board. And if they did come back to the board, the board could not accept the application because the board had already acted on the very same application.
Okay. Is there some reason that staff accepted the application?
I meant to ask that question, and I, I just didn't ask the question when we were on a conference call with the, one of the municipal attorneys. And she specifically said, the board has the right to not accept the application. And I wanted to follow up because one of the questions I asked of the law department, could staff had rejected the application? And I'm not sure staff had, would have the authority, but I really, that's my gut feeling. But I, because, based on what she said, the zoning board would have the authority to not accept the application.
Well.
So it might, the authority might rest with the board, but not rest with staff.
I'd appreciate you getting some clarification on that, because you could draw that line in other places as well, like saying, you know, if they wanted to request a variance from the building code under, to the zoning board. You know, something we clearly don't have jurisdiction for. And that's, I guess, one of the things that we rely on staff to do is to kind of triage these applications, to make sure that they meet the standards that are required for hearing. And if we've ruled on a case before, in that particular case, the exact same thing, I would think that you do have the authority to say, look, the board has already heard this, there's nothing more they can do. Mr. Vig?
I'm, I'm curious to know then if the board has the authority to not accept the application, if it needs to be on next month's agenda for us to formally not accept it? It seems like we, I don't know if we tabled it, or we asked for review by legal, but following what, what your advice was, we took no action rather than to not accept the application.
Well, we didn't advertise it for tonight as a public hearing. And we received the, the information from the law department today verbally. And they did send some of their documentation from the American Law Database on procedure before the zoning board of appeals. So we couldn't have scheduled it for tonight as the board requested last month. And we were, I was calling them to let the applicant and the applicant's representative know that we couldn't hear or proceed with the case tonight because it was not advertised as a public hearing, which we assumed it would have to be. And the, the, Mr. Kraus with AHFC said, well, we withdrew that by a letter two days after the meeting. I informed him, we have not received anything in writing. So as far as we know, as of today, this is a live application. And I was expecting to receive something today from them and from AHFC or their representative, which we did not. So as far as tonight, it's still a live application. We have to treat it that way until we get in writing, yes, we are withdrawing this request.
Okay.
So I want to pursue that with them and say, just send us an email.
Okay. Ms. Dole?
I changed my mind. I'm not going to ask a question.
Ms. Vlade?
I just want to be sure I understand. So you said we have the authority to deny the application. Do we also have the authority to accept the application?
The, what I understand is, to put it in my kind of, what I understand it is, it would be not to accept the application because basically, we've already acted, and there are no diff, unless there are significant changes regarding the circumstances of your request, we've already acted on your request. And we choose not to review this again because we have already reviewed it, and we have placed findings on the record as to our reason for not granting a variance in 2011.
And, and that makes sense to me. I guess I would just expect in the future that staff then intercepts that, and it doesn't make it to the board at all. So essentially, the answer is no. Here's the reasoning why, there's something documented, and, and it dies at that point.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I don't know, can I talk directly to who we're not in a public hearing now?
Chair, just talk freely.
My understa, I need to, I talked with my supervisor, and I, I explained, I said, I heard the municipal attorney that the zoning board has the authority not to accept the application. And I told her, I meant to ask, does the staff have that authority? And I really think we need to clarify that. So I don't want to say, yeah, we will do that in the future, because staff really is not the decision maker. The zoning board is the decision maker in terms of variances and how they will be acted upon. So I really want to clarify that before I can respond directly to that question, whether staff can intercept them and refuse to pass them along to you.
Okay. Ms. Dole?
I guess I could see a situation where there was, yeah, maybe a difference of opinion, and an applicant thought maybe there was a change, and the issue was, was it a substantial enough change to be a new and different request? And frankly, I'd rather not have to listen to that and make that decision. I guess my question is, how is that? It just seems like a preliminary matter that should be resolved before a public hearing. I'm not, I'm kind of agreeing with everyone. I don't know who it is that gets to make that call.
Yeah. I, I would think that you do have that authority because you, we've always, at least in, back when I was staff to this board, we, we made those decisions, especially when someone wanted to take another run at it with the, nothing substantially changing. But the other thing that I was thinking is that you could always take that stance of denying the application, and perhaps they could appeal your decision to the zoning board, I don't, to deny their application. Ms. Iker?
Thank you. I had actually kind of a more procedural question for staff. When you receive an application for a variance, does it get filed by parcel number, or is there some quick reference or check process that you go through so that, so that you, you know, hear a case in 2011, and you say, well, it's for this parcel number? And when, I don't know, maybe a subsequent owner comes back, or the same owner comes back requesting another variance, you can easily see that the matter has or has not gone before the board? And then if you don't have the power to reject an application, then I'm wondering if then that comes in your recommendations in our packets, so that you say, you know, this parcel, this matter's been before you, this date, you know, we recommend that the board doesn't accept?
We entered into a program called City View, and it's entered against the legal description of the property. And the case number is entered as well. We, we file our records by case number, not by legal description. The problem with City View is if a property is replatted, they get a new tax ID number. Now, this is getting kind of technical, but all of the history that was attached to a particular parcel, if that parcel changes, the history does not follow the parcel. The, the history does not follow the parcel when the parcel is subdivided or changes. So we don't really have a foolproof way of tracking it at the counter when it comes in. I discovered it when I was doing research, and I said, golly, this sounds familiar. This sounds like something I wrote already. And so I started looking through and discovered that it was written in 2011, and unfortunately, that file is missing and has been missing. So, yeah. We don't really have a foolproof way because the, the data can get lost and not retrievable in our current City View computer application.
Thanks.
Mr. Vig?
I guess a couple thoughts come to mind. First, if a parcel is replatted, it seems to me that that would likely be a changed condition that would allow variance requests to be heard that may have been previously denied on a different parcel on which this later one was located. And second, that the determination of whether or not there have been any significant change possibly could be an appealable item that would come before this board. In other words, if staff made a determination that it was essentially the same In other words, if staff made a determination that it was essentially the same request as had been previously heard and denied, that the applicant could come to the board and make their case for why that's not the situation. But there's a lot of unanswered questions, it seems to me, that, fortunately, this doesn't come up very often, but I'm kind of curious on how it would all shake out.
Any other comments? I think we had a good discussion on this. But I agree with Mr. Vig. I think that, I think there are avenues for getting that individual's case heard. Even if you take the stance that we've already ruled on it, there is that appeal option. And a replat, in my mind, also changes the, changes the circumstances that we considered the previous variance under. And I would say, in that particular case, we should go ahead and re, or, and hear it under the new legal description. Just my thoughts.
I have just a question. Will we be able to see the written opinion from the attorney when staff receives that? Is that something you can share with us?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Well, that was my question. Is this discussion on the record? I was just curious about whether it was or wasn't, and whether it should or shouldn't be.
We haven't adjourned yet, so I'm assuming it's part of the record for our meeting. Okay.
I was just curious.
Any other comments from the board or staff? I guess seeing none, we're adjourned for the night. Thank you.